Item number two, discussion and action on measures to mitigate the impacts of the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm going to, I had a presentation prepared for tonight. I'm going to go through a couple of the slides and then I just want to thank Robert Bindorf, C E O of Yuba County and Steve Smith, C E O of Sutter County for offering to come to the meeting tonight to be able to answer questions and provide some information to council. So I'm going to go through a couple of slides, ask them to come up, and then we'll complete the presentation. The latter part of the presentation will be more related to city operations. So with that, so as you all know, the state is currently monitoring counties based on the following. So elevated disease transmission, increasing hospitalizations, and limited hospital capacity. So as of July 6th, Sutter County has a total of 275 cases. 209 were symptomatic, 66 were asymptomatic, with a total of 13 individuals hospitalized, and then three deceased to this point. And this slide shows the source of infection. As you can see, a large portion of that is contact with known cases. If you look at the age ranges down here, again, 25 to 34 age range has the highest amount. And then it's like a bell curve where it goes down from there, although you do have a blip at the 55 to 64 range. And then the split between male and female, slightly more on the female side than the male side. And I think this next slide is important because when you look at the cases by location of residence, and so this is for Yuba County and Sutter County combined, you can see that the overwhelming majority of cases are within Yuba City, so 224 cases. So at this point in time, I'll go over one more thing. On July 1st, Governor Newsom issued a new order that all counties on the state watch list for more than three days shall close the following for three weeks. So indoor dine-in restaurants, indoor wineries and tasting rooms, indoor family entertainment centers, indoor movie theaters, indoor zoos and museums, indoor card rooms, and then brew pubs, breweries, bars, and pubs, both indoor and outdoor operations. So at this point in time, I'd like to invite Mr. Bindorf and Mr. Smith, whoever would like to speak first, to come up and be able to provide an update to council.
Oh, I'll leave unless you, would you prefer I take this off? Is it? Okay, well, good evening and thank you for allowing me some time to speak, Honorable Mayor and Councilmember Steve Smith, Sutter County. So yeah, a part of what I think would be good to cover is this updated order from the governor. And initially, there were 19 counties on this monitoring list. And as Diana mentioned, there were restrictions put on dine-in restaurants, wineries, et cetera. And I think that's probably the main impact that it would have to our community. I'm sure there would be some others with the family entertainment centers and theaters as well, but so one thing we're trying to do is hoping that we can mitigate this somewhat. But you have seen the drastic rise in cases, particularly over the weekend. And then yesterday, there were 34 new cases and six hospitalizations in one day. I was just told that there was a Sutter County death today, so an additional death unfortunately. I don't think any additional hospitalizations, but I'm not certain on that, so. One thing we've been told is so, so the Board of Supervisors is very concerned about businesses, as I'm sure your council is, and we've been in frequent communication with the Downtown Business Association, with the Chamber of Commerce and the E D C. And today Chair Solinger sent a letter on behalf of the Board to the governor to advocate that local data be used in these decisions and not just a blanket kind of statement or blanket policy be used by the state. We have, you know, most recently, the governor allowed local data to be used in the reopening phases. And we thought it worth advocating for our local businesses that the same standard be used in these consideration of closing these businesses because we know it has a massive impact on the community. And I can't, I can only imagine how rough it is to be laid off for a couple of months to just get back to work and then maybe have to do it again for the individual workers. And just as bad for the business owners that were trying to make ends meet. So supervisors would, will be considering next week as part of our, the Sutter County's CARES Act funding, some initial grants for these impacted businesses if this comes to fruition, which it looks like it will over the next several days or into the weekend. I've had a few folks ask, well, why don't we just not comply? You know, why don't we, so just tell the state tough? Which is a valid question, I guess, especially if it weren't for the great increase in cases that we have seen. But even if that weren't the case, there's a couple of reasons. One, the governor has tied CARES Act money to compliance. And not only is it the little over 10 million that Sutter County would be looking at getting, but also realignment backfill, which would be equivalent to about $5 million. So and about a third of that total, most likely, and it'll ultimately be up to the Board, but will be going to local businesses, straight into the community. It's not just for, you know, counties, labor, or things responding to the emergency. On top of that, the governor has created a task force comprised of agents from A B C, alcoholic beverage control, and I'm told OSHA, Cal OSHA, and also possibly the cosmetology board. So even if local authorities said, you know, there's, we're not going to comply with the governor, there would be enforcement, much like we saw before, at least allegedly, I can say. So to have that enforcement and also not receive that funding, that money that we can pass on to businesses to at least try to help during this time, I think would be really unfortunate. So the letter sent to the state did say we are complying and with federal and state and local orders and that, but we would appreciate consideration of local numbers and local data. So one other thing I wanted to mention and thank Councilmember Espendola is the Latino outreach that was recently done. And I don't want to steal your thunder, and you probably, probably want to comment about it towards the end when you each speak. So I won't go too far into that, but just thank you very much for your leadership on that with Supervisor Flores and a few other folks. And we're still working on that. And in just outreach with the SCORE, Sutter County's, it's a Sutter COVID outreach resiliency effort. It's similar to the YES team, which Robert has running in Yuba County to reach out to businesses. So that's really all I have for now, and Robert probably has much more. So if Robert would like to speak, and then we can answer questions and/or I can answer some questions now, you know, whatever you prefer.
Steve, I'm just curious to know the SCORE team on this side of the river versus the Yuba County's YES team. Have you experienced your success, what successes have you had, or what challenges have you had? Do you still have goals as far as processes that you're, that you're still trying to work through? Or anything we can, just for information only, we'd like to receive that, but any way we can maybe help out?
Sure, I am scheduling a call for this week with the leads of the SCORE team. So I'll have more information soon that I can forward over. They do maintain a spreadsheet of businesses, which is getting pretty massive now that they've visited, and then provide information. Today, I had a local restaurant owner call me. I forwarded the concerns to the SCORE team and copied the restaurant owner. And the team immediately responded and sent some CDC guidance and some state guidance, and then followed up with a phone call to the restaurant owner and said, if you have any questions, just call me directly. This was John Flo, our lead on the SCORE team. So also, we are looking at focusing on the Latino outreach as well. We have put, we have people that speak various languages on the SCORE team. And we've also put an eligibility worker on the team for outreach so that from our understanding, we've had some issues with maybe a lack of trust from those who maybe don't normally interact with the government, or they're concerned that if they don't go to work, they're not going to have any money, they're not, they're going to lose their job, that kind of thing. So we also have outreach for, to at least be able to let them know what benefits are available to them. So we've, we've got a, I guess, a wide-ranging approach, but we can always do better, and we're always open for ideas. And I just spoke with Councilmember Espendola. Geez, texting over the weekend and also speaking, I think Friday we spoke, Thursday or yesterday too? Okay, it was yesterday. Time flies. I don't know.
I know they'd appreciate, I don't know if they put together maybe an F A Q document of sorts for business owners. I know that some folks would appreciate just flat out, if we have an exposure at work, one of my 10 employees have an exposure, what do I do now? Where do I go? What is my, well, legal and of course ethical obligations there? I think if we can, if there's a way to have a one-stop shopping place for those folks to go for information, that would really help. And it's very likely already in your plan, but that's been expressed to me recently. I just wanted to communicate that.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, because that's what the call was about today.
Oh, great, okay.
They didn't have an outbreak, but they said, what if I get an employee?
Right.
Exactly should I do?
It would put somebody in a tough spot if they had that and not really know what to do.
Right, so we provided that, but I think, you know, we can post that online and provide links.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Smith, just curious what we're doing going forward to help address this from the county level. I know that you guys did the outreach. I heard about it over the weekend, and kudos, that's awesome. I know that our local business owners here have gone above and beyond in most every case. I mean, there's always the rogue ones that are out there, but the local business owners here have. I've even watched our big box stores, you know, national retailers start to come into line as well with trying to enforce the face covers and ask at least and not just ignore it. But when we get back to this, as this previous slide stated, it's contact tracing, it tracing as far as close contact, which is all these family gatherings. And I know it has hit different demographics of our society harder. And you guys were reaching out to one of those demographics this weekend. But what are we doing on an ongoing basis to help educate people, to help them stop some of the social gatherings that's going on in the large masses that is causing this uptick? Because I like Dr. Lou, but after about three months of anything, you, you know, people naturally start tuning out. And she had a very passionate message the other day. It just said straight up, you know, wake up and get with the program. But after three months, I'm not sure that those updates are probably our best avenue. Have, what else are we going to try to do? Because we need to, we need to bend this curve because we don't, we do not need ride-out hospital full and the ICU full. Any ideas at this point?
I have tried banging my head against a wall, and that was ineffective. However,
That happens when you.
Yeah.
It was supposed to be pots and pans at 7:00, remember?
But you're right, it's very difficult. And also, what I have found is as we are communicating to the public about this, there's, you know, a portion of the population that is very against this, whether they, mask-wearing, or the distancing, or they feel it's against the Constitution, or that kind of thing. So it has been rough. Some of the things we've done is utilize, you know, contacts of people that we feel like, oh, you have a good relationship with X Y Z organization or this group. Maybe you could go and talk to them and encourage them. I've sent a personal letter the other day to a large organization that had received some complaints and had been advertising that they were having a large event and that would have, and I know they held it, but that violated the order. And I sent a letter with my concerns. Additionally, I think, yeah, beyond Dr. Lou providing outreach, and I understand, you know, some, a portion of the population aren't going to listen no matter what. Some are almost maybe always going to listen, and others may be skeptical or somewhere in between. We have developed with the sheriff and the Board, we were going to have a few events where need a mask, just ask and provide masks, maybe have a drive-through type thing where supervisors and the sheriff can, and staff can hand out masks and different P P E and things. We'd be glad to have the city on board and participate in that. So there are a variety of things, but we don't have, we haven't lucked into that one effective strategy that is going to convince people. I mean, I, our P I O posted the other day that, on Facebook, that not only are masks the law, they work. And then he had an article posted, and almost every comment was about how it's not the law. And it kind of was a message that was lost. And I understand, you know, there's, there's some nuance there where, okay, it's an order, but it's enforceable by Health and Safety Code, which is law. But we don't want to get into that argument. It was a, you know, I'm just saying, things turn into something that you don't want them to be when you're just trying to advocate for people's safety. And we also, though, understand the frustration of individuals who are tired of wearing masks, or I'm tired of wearing this mask. And it's easy to get complacent. So just continually reinforcing that message, and, you know, we are always open to ideas. And Councilmember Espendola had some ideas with the SCORE team that we already implemented. So we're open because we know we're not, we're not perfect, and we've got a tall task ahead of us.
Okay, well, thank you for everything. And I just want to say, Mr. Smith, Mr. Bindorf, thank you guys because you guys have been not running a sprint, but a marathon since the beginning of this. So thank you for everything you guys have done. And I know it was a loaded question. I just didn't know if you had any other ideas. If you do reach the point of wanting to do a mask giveaway, we had great success at my office. A few months ago, we gave out 3,000 in about three hours. So if the, if that becomes an option, then that you guys want to pursue, it was a good location, natural queue up for traffic. I'll be happy to, just give me a call and we'll see what we can do.
Thank you very much, yeah. I know our Ag Department just got 7,000 N95 masks, which aren't for the average person, but you know, are good for the farmers. And I know also, they've given out to this point to, specifically to the Ag community, a little over 100,000 masks over the past, you know, month or so. But yeah, we appreciate your efforts too. Thank you.
No, no problem. The offer is there. If you need a location, just give me a call.
Thanks.
Through Vice Mayor? Because the mayor's gone, so I'm going through you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I just would like to thank you, Steve Smith. And I would like to thank the, your team, in particular Rudy Rodriguez, as I mentioned to you, for his dedication and working. And I look forward to hearing too also what Robert is going to be presenting. I think the outreach to Latinos and non-English-speaking community members is really important, and I applaud the work that, the focus on that. But I also have, you know, we've talked about the need to improve the consistency of reaching out to businesses and helping them have a better understanding of how to, what are the rules for them? And how to manage it and how to process? I think that would be so helpful to many of our businesses because I think that they're more than likely willing to comply. And so I am interested in seeing the collaboration, the coordination by county, because we are a by-county. People in Marysville often say, or in Yuba County, well, I live in Yuba City. No, you live in Yuba County. That's another county. But they all consider this one area. And so I like the collaboration between you and Robert, and also the supervisors in Marysville. And I think that this is the way we're going to be able to reduce the spread of this. And I want to thank you so much for listening and willing to always work with us. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Steve, I'm going to keep mine short. Number one, again, as has been said, thanks for your effort. And I'll thank Robert when he hops up there too. But I do know this is, this isn't non, this is not traditional work for county administrator and the army of folks you have working in the background. Very encouraged to hear about the county support for the use of local data. If you feel like there's any benefit in having us pen a letter to support that, let us know. Certainly, I think, you know, I think it makes sense to have local decisions based upon local data rather than just a broad brush painted over the top. I do, I do want to echo one thing, and this comes from my experience of operating a business with the unfortunate circumstance of having a COVID-19 infected employee is that, you know, there's a challenge out there in getting real-time data. And I, you know, by virtue of the fact that I've listened to, you know, the doc and how overwhelmed they are, and I'm certainly understanding of that, but as the case load continues to increase, I think that's only going to be another area that is going to be very important to reach out to businesses because it gets to be quite frustrating when you're trying to figure out what to do, what not to do. I have the benefit of listening to you guys almost on a weekly basis, but there's a lot of businesses that don't have that. And I think to Councilwoman Espendola's point is, is there's a piece there that I think we, we can challenge ourselves to be a little bit better at. And if there's something we can do to help you with that as a city, certainly want to commit that as well. But again, thanks. I know this isn't, this isn't easy stuff. And I appreciate the fact that you guys are definitely engaged in trying to make decisions in the best, the best way. Thank you very much. And I know Robert can cover some of the efforts that we're reinstituting at the moment as well that will assist.
Thank you very much, Steve. Appreciate it.
Good evening. So either you get the mask or the glasses, so. Since my face is not that pretty, I'm just going to give you the mask. How's that? Because the glasses just don't work very well with this thing on. So Robert Bindorf, County Administrator for Yuba County, and thanks so much for having us here. I know it was on short notice, but as Steve and I were talking about, things in the ever-changing environment of COVID-19, felt that, hey, why not go over to Yuba City's meeting tonight and talk with them? And I'll ask Steve to join me over at the city of Marysville as well too, soon. But obviously, we're facing just a huge challenge, even bigger than before. You've seen the numbers. I won't belabor the point there. But I can tell you that it doesn't take much for us to continue moving forward. A lot of dedicated staff, but a lot of tired staff too. And, but we're making those adjustments as we go along. You know, I was giving my Board a briefing this morning, and one of them asked if I had some free time this afternoon. And I said, no, I don't. This evening I do, but it's just one COVID-19-related meeting after the other. And as Steve can agree as well, it's a real challenge. So I can tell you some things that are going on right now, and some ways of doing business a little bit differently. We are going to activate the call center. Again, you know, we shut it down for a while there, but considering the current circumstances, we are going to fire it back up. So we are marshalling resources. We've appointed two dedicated, full-time on-call, or call center managers. And then we're also gathering resources to man that call center as well. And those resources are coming from not only Yuba County employees, but Sutter County employees. And we're looking at staffing that to a five-day-a-week operation, most likely beginning Thursday or Friday. There's some rewiring that we have to do. We just went through a wholesale change where we're using our joint information, where our joint information center was located. So there'll be in our E O C where we have the facilities necessary to conduct that. So one slight change, we're pulling our P I Os from running the joint information center to having those two dedicated managers. The P I Os will be really involved, but their attention needs to be focused elsewhere. And we're very confident that they'll still be involved. They're housed in the same area, so we'll be fine in that regard. In addition to that, we are, I believe Vice Mayor Boomgarden mentioned about the, or somebody did, about the daily operations center and the doc, basically. You know, we have about 20 dedicated staff there now, a combination of Yuba and Sutter County employees. We are doubling that staff. So we've already identified on both sides of the river, an additional 20. And the recruitments began earlier this week for a separate classification for contact tracers and contact investigators. There is a difference, but I'm not going to sit here and pretend to know. I know the exact differences. I think you can probably figure it out by their titles for the most part. They are stressed. They are tired. Their days are going really long, seven days a week. Holidays, the whole nine yards. And we also have one manager managing that show. Dr. Rice is very talented and very good at what he does, but we know he needs some help. And while he's tried to convince us that he can do it and power through, we're going to put some resources in place that you'll be hearing about what that ask might be. But the contact tracers and investigators have a tough job. You know, when we talk about the data that's coming through, the statistics, whether it's those that are infected, how they were infected, and tracing back where the infections came from, it's really hard. Because once these people are on the phone, they answer, we tell them who we are. Yeah, you know what happens next, right? They either hang up, or hit the cancel button, or throw their phone in a bucket of water, or whatever it may be. They don't want to talk to us. And even if they do talk to you, they're a little reluctant to tell you where they were, how they got infected, et cetera. So when you look at some of the contact tracing information, as far as the point of origin of the infections, the data can be skewed. There's about 40% that we don't know about. And it makes it really difficult. We believe we've taken care of the language barriers. We have Pajabi speakers, Spanish speakers, Monge speakers, the whole nine yards. We've had those since the beginning. It's worked out well. But it's still a challenge for us. As Steve mentioned, we had another death occur today. 58-year-old female from the side of the river with a couple of underlying conditions, but rushed to the E R in the hospital only for a couple of days, and passed away due to COVID-related complications. And that's their sixth death now. And as you know, the hospitals are local hospitals, and those in Sacramento are being challenged. Here locally, well, let me go back to the doc first. We feel very comfortable with the doubling of resources. And I have those numbers for you, by the way, those phone numbers that you were asking about. Like Councilmember Boomgarden, I'll get those to you, or deliver them to somebody, or Diana or something. We, we've got to think creatively, a little bit more. You know, we always talk about lessons learned. I tell you, this is lessons learned from the day before. Because this pandemic is so unique and it's so wily. And our, our folks, when I say our folks, Sutter and Yuba folks, we are doing everything we can to rearrange schedules, dedicate personnel. And literally, I, you know, I tell the Board all the time that it's, I don't want to take five employees and stick them over there part-time. They got to go do their job the other half of the day, or they do their job two days out of the week that they normally do. Just, just cut right to the heart of it and dedicate them full-time. So maybe we can flatten that curve. Maybe we can get ahead of this a little bit. Maybe you stop that one person from getting infected that may have died. And then you make all the difference in the world. You know, then you make all the difference in the world, right? So our push is to make sure we have enough resources for the public, for our residents, for our businesses, for our own employees. But I think we'll do that coming soon. With the hospitals, obviously, we have one local hospital here. Dr. Lou is in communication with them every day. Our local clinics as well. And she talked to him about what you saw here about the order. And we're going to be on that list. It's coming out tomorrow. Was going to come out Thursday. State said they made a mistake. It's coming out Wednesday. So the order will probably become effective, most likely, when Dr. Lou issues it Sunday or Monday. And it covers exactly what's there. We talked about that with Rick Rossin from Adventist, the leaders at Ampla and Sutter. And it's really met with just a few simple words. They're saying thank God because they are overtaxed. Adventist right now has 180 beds out of 221 capacity filled. And 20 of those are COVID-related. They have an overall capacity of 63 ICU beds that they can total out of the 221. But they're very worried. When you look at what happened to Shasta Reading Hospital, they went to no capacity a couple of days ago. Now they've got a little capacity, but everything is just ebbing and flowing so much. It's very challenging for those healthcare workers. Anyway, and we want to do whatever we can. Dr. Lou, like I said, is working with them constantly, making sure they have PPE, making sure they have the right resources, and in turn, they're being a great resource for us. So what are we doing on the prevention side? As Steve mentioned earlier about the efforts with Latino community, you know, nothing burns me more than the efforts from the state that unfortunately I felt were too late. We recognized this issue weeks ago and we put measures in place on both sides of the river. And it takes a little while to get things going, but we have some great messaging, some in-person messaging. And we have our yes teams and score teams and the ag community meeting with them to make sure the Latino population is not left behind. We recognize those cultural differences and it's tough. It's tough for them. Just to not only, from language barriers, barriers to cultural differences, to employment, to larger families, it is very tough. But we're making that outreach and I think it is really making a difference. And we've heard that it's making a difference. So thank you for your efforts. Dr. Ravellus, Mayor Samayoa from the other side of the river, and Supervisor Flores and several others, just done a fantastic job. I believe the number was 70 to 75% of the infections is about a week ago, I believe, the new ones that were coming in were Latinos. And we felt that we got ahead of it, but it just seems like it's, we're still struggling, but we know we're doing a good work. So our yes team that's out there talking to businesses, our yes team is set up in a way, we've got four dedicated employees, one manager and three others, like Steve said, speaking multitude of languages. They've been out for over a month now. They have made all contacts with all lodging. That's camping, hotels, you name it. Everyone 100% covered. We have 240,000 masks being delivered tomorrow, actually. We've already distributed some out for our businesses. We've distributed about 2,000 gallons in care packages of hand sanitizer and other masks as well. I think that number was about 40,000 initially, and then plus we're getting to 240,000 as well. We know your folks on this side of the river, visit our folks on that side of the river, restaurants or businesses, whatever it may be. And with the score team, with the yes team, both of us, I think, are doing a pretty good job of getting those resources out there. We have already notified 187 of the businesses. We gave them a pre-warning about what's coming with the new order, the watch period, and then we go boots on the ground tomorrow. Not only do we message them, we're going boots on the ground tomorrow to inform them of what it'll mean to them moving forward. So having said that, I'm sure your city manager's got much more to cover, and I don't want to take up all the time, but I'd more than happy to answer any questions you may have. But I just can't thank you enough, and I think Steve did already, just the support that you've given us and all of those employees that are working hard to make sure that this virus is defeated somehow. We'll keep at it, but we can't do without your support, so we thank you for that.
Good question for you, Robert, real quick. First of all, thank you also for everything you guys are doing. I really appreciate the frequent communication and like Vice Mayor said, this is unprecedented. This is something new and you're literally learning every day and responding and adjusting and improving. So regarding, you mentioned the capacity of Adventist, and it's getting pretty close. Regarding the surge capacity, I know we had agreements in place with the high schools and gyms. Is that still in effect and how, do we have anticipated any impact it may have with school potentially, these part-time reopening?
Great question, Mayor. Thank you. So as a matter of fact, we had a meeting today. We've been looking at that issue and we recognize that with the potential of schools opening, again, I emphasize potential of schools opening, we knew we had to think of alternate sites to the alternate sites. So we came up with a couple, three that are really draft right now with the help of Neil Hay from Sutter County's side, Kevin Allen, and a few of us on the call today. We're making alternative plans for that. Those agreements have expired, Mayor, and so we are planning on next steps. But we know the hospital still has capacity. We know that there's other surge capacity in the community with medical facilities that we've already spoken to, and then the alternate care sites. We hope to have something in place. Our target is a little less than two weeks. I mean, I'm not, we didn't just pick a target. Like I say, there's a little science behind it when we talk about it, but Dr. Lou, obviously with what happened in relation to the uptick in infections, a couple of weeks after some significant family get-together days, et cetera, this will be a couple of weeks after the Fourth of July holiday, we expect it to still continue.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Goodness, Mayor. Obviously, thanks again for your willingness to field our calls, my calls, and the patience with which the answers come. I guess the biggest question I have right now anyway, and this might be one that gets answered tomorrow by Dr. Lou, is the thing that's making my text ring off the hook or my phone ring off the hook right now is when is this all going to happen? When's this going to go into effect? So the sooner you can get that out, so that we can get that to the business owners, at least within our city and in our region, because we are a region, I think the better because they know it's coming, but they just don't know when. And I think that's the biggest ask I have right now. But again, deeply felt thanks for what you're doing. I know you take a lot of bullets and a lot of arrows and a lot of knives and all kinds of other means of body harm, but I for one, recognize the effort that's being put forth. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Goodness, Mayor. Robert, I cannot thank you enough. And your team, Rachel and Russ, excellent, excellent work. And so however we can help you and however the yes teams and the score teams can be unified in a way to help our businesses. And I am extremely pleased and thankful and grateful for the multi-language and multicultural aspects. The biggest concern is to reduce the spread, to help reduce that spread, control it. And we can do that. We definitely can, but we all have to, you know, support each other in this process. And you have been a tremendous leader in this and your board supervisors have been extremely supportive in all of this. And so for myself directly, I would like to thank you and I'm very grateful for all the work that's been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Talk to you in the morning or see you in the morning.
All right. So the next person that's going to come up is Mr. Moody, the Development Services Director. And then after him, it will be Mr. McIntyre, the Community Services Director, to talk about recreation programs.
Thank you.
So a quick recap regarding the outdoor dining policy. And so with the implementation of this, this new order, we, with the restriction of the inside dining, we do have this outdoor dining policy that we have in place, that we put out early May. And so city staff is available and with, we've put it on our website and we'll also coordinate with Sutter County's yes, score team in order to make sure that goes out and we're available to meet with them. But so there is this outdoor dining policy in place where we're allowing the utilization of existing parking, just because it's not being used and why not use it if it's available and to help the business? And so we'll meet on-site, we'll walk the site, you know, make sure we have, there's no concerns about ADA, work through any ABC requirements, and then how to work, work this through the social distancing protocol and with the state guidance. And so that is in place and staff is available to help work through that with businesses. Additionally, in the, if it's not in the parking lot of private property, we're giving them the option to work through it on the city sidewalk or on some public property if it's adjacent, but we'll work through that through a slightly different process with an encroachment permit and just making sure we have paths of travel. And so just a quick update regarding City Hall, we remain open Monday through Friday, eight to five. We're monitoring that depending on how the case count and how, how staff is affected through that as we work through these different social distancing protocols and how those change. Animal Services is Tuesday through Saturday, nine to 4:30. Mr. McIntyre can expand on that if needed. And with the Police Department lobby recently closing down to public access again, so that will remain closed until further notice. And so all other facilities within Yuba City continue to remain closed to the public.
Through the mayor. Mr. Moody, if we can go back a slide, I've got a couple of questions. On this, when this all first happened with COVID and we were ordered to basically shelter in place, the restaurants that were affected were basically the ones that were under the jurisdiction of ABC. And other restaurants were able to continue on as we were walking through things. But this new order means all indoor dining. Does it matter if you have alcohol or not? Am I interpreting that correct?
So previously, the order stayed in effect for dine-in, but it was, it was really came down to enforceability versus the state versus the, by county order. And it came down to those with alcohol being enforced by the state. And so with this, this is a state order and then it will depend on how Dr. Lou reflects that order. But so every intention I've heard at the moment is we're going to match this. And so it basically comes to both food and alcohol. But you get into who's going to enforce what. And so it will be a local enforcement if it's just food. If it's, if you get into the alcohol, it could be local and state.
Okay. I know we're trying to thread a needle from across the room with this, but we, we have to make sure that our businesses have at least an opportunity to survive through this. And I was very encouraged with the fact that there may be some grant money coming through, but likewise, we just got the employees back to work. This, we don't have any restrictions really over a percentage of the parking lot they can consume or whatnot. You're working through that as long as it'll, you know, the rideaway, fire, safety, we're pretty flexible in that, correct?
Absolutely. And so it's really, let's be realistic and how can we get cars in and out without running into conflicts with diners? And then really, and we've pushed on that through our working group with Yuba City staff and also with Yuba County, that a lot of these rules come down and they're very subjective. What is indoor dining? What does that mean? You know, if I put a pop-up outside, is that still qualified or does it not? Because businesses are struggling, they're trying to figure out how to work under these guidelines and stay open and working that business. And we're definitely pro-business and we're trying to communicate that and figure out where can they still work within these rules and stay open.
Okay. This is something I've thought of a lot over the weekend because since the governor spoke last week and we saw our numbers going up, I wanted to make sure all of our restaurants had the availability to continue to operate. The one thing that I identified is we have a very unique section of our city that has a lot of restaurants and they do not have a whole lot of parking. And that would be our downtown business area. And so I know it's later on the agenda, but the idea hit me to, why don't we look at entertaining the, the idea of instead of just, if this comes to pass, which it sounds like we're going to have it sometime between now and next Monday, that Dr. Lou's going to issue an order and we're going to be to no indoor dining. Not that we're mandating on the DBA, but if they would like, since they have such limited parking down there, to literally turn the Pluma Street into a promenade, kind of indefinitely during this, until we can get back to some normal operations to allow our restaurants to have the opportunity and even retail businesses to operate by having their dining in the middle of Pluma Street. But again, this would have to be if they wanted it, but we have to say that we're in agreement with it if they wanted to do it. They're already asking us for three dates. It would give them a fighting chance. The governor says indoor dining, let's turn everything into outdoor. Is that something that we could do?
My understanding, we could definitely talk to the city attorney, but I believe with the public works, with the director's authorization under the municipal code, and then also later on with emergency operations. I don't know the exact title, Diana, as we called that, but we have the authority to do that.
Yes, it would require another, so later on in the agenda, it's council ratifying the emergency director's order. And so basically it would be the city manager, again, needing to make the order and then that would come back to council at a later date to ratify it.
Okay. Those orders, when they typically come back though, don't we have to bring that back? I believe, Mr. Chaffin, within seven days of the order?
Not in this current case.
Okay.
It used to be that a seven-day requirement was in effect for any declaration of local emergency. However, we have already declared a local emergency. And as a result, the director has authority just to issue it outright.
And then we would, we would need to coordinate, make sure we coordinate with police and fire, especially for a long-term closure, that they would still have adequate access to the street and businesses.
Okay. I would honestly like us to entertain direction, whatever, to where if the DBA requests it because it's a unique situation, that we would accommodate that because they're already asking for three dates and it's kind of unique. They don't have parking lots to extend into. All they have is the street out in front. So I don't know if that's something we're willing to discuss tonight and give direction or what, because this is on our doorstep.
I think for direction, we have to have it agendized, the specific item agendized. But if our city manager or the coordinator with the title, which he wears that hat, has the ability to do that, I think we're pretty much have a consensus right now that we're okay with that. If there's any other commentary, I'd like to hear that. But the main thing would be to ensure fire and police access. You know, we were thinking, you know, what I was envisioning is the jury, the concrete Jersey walls and make it look nice for a promenade, if you will, I think that's the word you used. But we have to make sure we can get fire trucks and ambulances and whatnot through there. I don't know that, do you need specific direction or consensus and then to use your authority, Diana?
My concern would be if the DBA does not have unanimous support of it, and then we get into a situation where the city's proceeding forward with that, and then we have businesses coming to us saying, why are you doing that? And so in terms of direction, it would be, would be helpful to have council support in terms of that threshold as to when, you know, what percentage of the businesses want to proceed? Would we say, okay, we'll do that? Because it will impact access to businesses, it will impact parking. And so if the DBA were to come forward, you know, what is the percentage that's acceptable to then move forward with considering this concept?
Definitely. I think, I think to move forward, the next step would be stipulator that we would confer with the DBA and get a consensus there. I would even recommend that we contact every business on Pluma Street, including the post office and other folks that may be affected by that. But I think there is a consensus.
Through the mayor, I think that the city manager's point is well-taken, having some familiarity with Pluma Street over the years, the many years in fire access. I'm not going to speak for the fire chief, but that's a big, that's an issue. A lot of high-risk. Uh, a lot of high-risk, high-value stuff down in that area, so you don't want to impact that. But I think the other piece that I would mention is, um, to go along with the concept is, I think is great, is those businesses, a lot of those dining businesses are going to be doing their business in the after hour, after normal business hours, but I think checking in with those that might be impacted by a street closure would be very prudent.
Okay. And then we have, um, Ms. Drowne will be with us in the later agenda item. Can we check with her since she's representing the DBA?
Yes, Chris Ray and Sandy Drowne are going to be, are participating now. They might be on the phone line now, but, um, they will be participating in the Plumas Street, uh, summer marketplace agenda item.
Okay. Do we want to get any input from them now or just on the later agenda item? Doesn't matter.
Welcome to comment right now. Have they by chance?
They're on the phone.
They're on the phone.
Oh. Can chat one more time.
Hi, this is Sandy Drowne.
Hi Sandy.
I want to thank the, hi, thank you Mayor Harris and the council for your time today.
Have her mute, mute the computer.
Sandy, if you could mute your computer.
Is your computer? Is that better?
Yes, it is.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can, thank you.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. Um, but thank you guys for your time today. A comment from the DBA, um, just before I go into, um, this and I don't want to make it long, I just wanted to share the comments from the DBA, um, that, uh, for our city, the police, fire, public works, our city manager Diana and her executive team, to our city council who have been in the past years instrumental to our success and especially now in our current challenges. So just first off, just thanking you guys for stepping up, supporting our local businesses. And just so you guys know, um, from the, on the DBA's behalf, we do appreciate you. And going to the comment, um, in regards to the DBA, we are currently, uh, taking a census of the businesses and, um, as we speak. And so the only thing that would be my concern is, uh, we don't, we can definitely go to every business and we'd want to anyways, um, but is to start this conversation. If, if it can't happen, then it's kind of a, just having conversations. So I wasn't sure if there was, it would be easier to say that the city is hoping to do this and this is an option. So then you can go to those businesses, talking about a hypothetical that might not happen is, um, is, is kind of tough and it's a lot of time. So I just don't know if the city, um, if, if the city approved that or was okay with that, then it would be easier for us to go to them because we're not talking hypothetical at this point. We're talking that this is what the city wants, is, is offering for us and do we want to take advantage of this opportunity, uh, during this shutdown? Does that make sense?
Why? Can we do it without making a vote? Can we do an informal poll? Is anybody opposed to the, at least exploring the idea further? Yes or no? Just all we need right now. Sandy, I think you have consensus that we would be supportive, but we don't want to steamroll or, or override anything those businesses do. We don't want to accidentally undermine them in any way, in ways that we haven't thought about. But, uh, if you're willing to continue with the poll and come back with, and let us know what the consensus is, we'd, we'd be happy to, uh, participate in something with you.
Okay, so I would, uh, let them know that the city is in, uh, this is an option that the city is okay with.
Yes. I, I, yeah.
Through the mayor.
Yeah, we have one more comment, one second.
I do. I, I think we better have the police and fire department weigh in, um, before.
That will be, that would be before we finalize it, yes, for sure.
But I, I think.
If they, if you care to comment right now, Jesse, if you're prepared to do so.
Also, I just want to note that I believe Chief Landon's on the phone as well.
Good, good, thank you.
Uh, yes, the fire departments, uh, willing to examine and take a look at that, however, a site plan so that we can identify access in and out because as Vice Mayor mentioned, uh, some very high-value, uh, locations in there and it is a kind of a tight fit. So it's more of analyzing a site plan for us to determine that.
Makes sense. And Chief Landon, if you're on the line, would you care to comment on anything?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I guess so. I'm trying to mute my thing.
All that, just to tell you that, um, I echo Jesse's comments that we're more than welcome to explore everything, to do what we have to, to make the businesses successful. And, um, we just want to have a say at the end of the day, but we certainly are in this together.
Thank you very much. And Jesse, would it be your role to contact Bi-County and bring them in the loop as well? Is that something?
In regards to working with Bi-County ambulance, absolutely. We would, uh, plan that out and pre-plan it ahead of time so that we knew exactly in the event of any medical emergency.
Just to let them know we're doing what to, correct. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys. My only last comment on that is, because this was just an idea that hit me and, um, if it doesn't work, then like with everything else, if the DBA decides it doesn't work for them and their majority's wanted, then let's take it back down. Let's don't hinder them. So, thank you guys. Susan, mayor?
Does this mean that we're actually, we're, we're wanting to shut the street down is what we're wanting to do? That's the goal?
Well, we're not wanting to, we're willing to consider it as a potential option to assist our businesses in the event they're required to shut down indoor dining.
Okay. I want to talk on the public works side of this. You know, we're talking concerning about a short budget fall and stuff like this, uh, and us trying to save money. Uh, we got to pay public works employees to go out there to shut the street down and open it back up if they do these things. So, and only cones and so on and so forth. So this is all an expense to us, so we got to count in on that also for being an expense.
Yeah, I don't believe it's going to be a daily open and close is what we're discussing. It'll be something, uh, temporarily permanent.
So we're just saying like once, once a week?
It'll be a static, static barriers or, but as long as we can allow emergency equipment to still get through.
Okay. But the employees will still be setting this stuff up and taking it down?
It'll be a one-time thing.
Or just a one-time thing?
A one-time thing and it's closed until we open it back up.
Okay.
Not just, uh, I always forget what those signs are, those sandwich board, not just that and some cones. It'll be something that looked, uh, well, temporarily permanent, but it's, it'll look nice and official and things like that. That's what we're envisioning.
So we also got the transit authority involved in this too. The buses go down.
Good point.
Yeah.
That's a very good point. Thank you for that.
Yeah. Okay. Because they have designed routes to there, they have.
We have the, uh, the idea man right here that's on the board, so we can bring that up.
So am I.
And you are too.
Yeah, okay.
That's a good call. Thank you for the input.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, throw these all out there while we're thinking about this.
Thank you for that.
Issues, okay.
Thank you for the input. Appreciate it. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
All right, I'll turn it over to Brad to discuss parks.
Brad McIntyre, your community services director. Uh, just a couple of updates, um, and reminders for our parks. Regency Park Shanghai Garden, uh, have splash pads. Uh, they have been open. Uh, we did, uh, have a situation where we were getting too many people, um, at Regency Park and so we reduced it by an hour and, uh, informed people that, uh, they needed to disperse. I mean, that seemed to be, and that was about a week and a half ago. And that has, uh, worked, uh, well so far, so we've stayed with 11 to 7. Uh, our playgrounds continue to be closed. Uh, there's signage on all of them. In fact, we spend a lot of staff time, uh, every morning, uh, about two hours, um, taking care of the signage, gets ripped up, we have to go find it in garbage cans, other places, uh, and so then we put it back in the parks. So I do want to remind, uh, our public that, uh, it is, playgrounds are still closed. For a little good news, um, staff has started the process of, uh, providing swim lessons. We've been promoting it since last week. Uh, just a little bit of information, these are two-week sessions, uh, 30 minutes per session and it would take place Monday through Friday. Their concept is one instructor per three children, uh, in the pool. Uh, to register, uh, for individuals, they can go to ubacity.net or they can call Gaoxi Aquatic Park at 822-4655, or they can contact City Hall at 822-4650. Uh, we have been registering participants for the last two days, uh, and as of right now, we have over 130 registered, uh, participants. So it's, uh, getting, um, uh, it seems like the public is responding to it. Um, we will have certainly as many COVID protocols in place to protect the participants, our staff, uh, and the parents. I want to back up just a little bit. Um, we also have, uh, in process, uh, the, uh, camp, offering summer camp, uh, that is pending at this particular time. Uh, Uba City Unified School Board District, uh, as we speak, uh, will be talking and voting, uh, upon an agreement where we'd be offering that at Gray Avenue. So if anybody is watching this now, I'd, uh, uh, we will have something out first thing tomorrow morning. I'll get a text this evening and then we're, we will put something out, uh, if we are going to proceed with camp, which would start next week. Uh, it will be limited to, uh, 45 individuals per week, uh, ages six through 12. Again, um, we will have what we call the pod, uh, it's outdoors obviously as well. Uh, one rec leader per nine children. Uh, we will, or hopefully will be utilizing, uh, the MP room as well, but for short periods of time, uh, depending on when it's, it's really hot. Uh, each participant, uh, through their, uh, through Uba City Unified will also provide free breakfast, free lunch and give weekend bags to go as far as food is concerned as well. Um, I'd gladly answer any questions you may have about either of those two opportunities. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad. All right. Let me see this real quick. All right, regarding public comment on item number two, I do have one here. Do we have any more besides the one that we got earlier?
Um, yes, we've had some come in on the computer also.
Okay, why don't we read those first? And then just for the record, I'm going to, I don't know, we have other items here too, but, uh, we will limit the, uh, keep the time limits strictly of three and five minutes.
Um, yes, and also any of the, um, presentations that have been sent in, if they go longer, they will be posted to, um, our website so people can read them there.
Yes, thank you.
So if we don't have enough time to finish.
All right.
Okay, um, so I'll start with the one that came in from Karen Hess. And I think we have that up on computer. Yes. Okay, um, this is Karen Hess of Uba City, um, on item number two, COVID-19 in the community. Uba City is epicenter in Uba City cases. Um, the PHO, which I believe she means a public health organization blames the number of cases on community spread. What are the Uba City case zeros for community spread? Business slash work transmission, another party slash gathering? I suspect the widespread business and consumer, or customer non-compliance is playing an important role here, which came first, the chicken or the egg? Communication is not effective. Local messaging is not reaching locals. Unaware of a local mask order of May 4th, unaware of required business protocols, during reopening, unaware of phases. EOC not affected despite two PIOs with media experience. If the message is, isn't being received and processed, um, change the messenger, change the message, change the medium, or possibly change all three. EOC not effective on other fronts. Email addresses and telephone are black holes. Complaints do not result in follow-up. Businesses with legitimate questions, um, don't get follow-up. Does the EOC have cultural competency to address non-compliance? Um, so socio-economic, political ideology, race, ethnic, language, educationally disadvantaged, poor choice of news sources and other. Uba City can chart its own future. It appears as though that Uba City has, uh, abdicated to the ineffective Bi-County EOC. Address business non-compliance, including complaints by public, enforce face coverings by public, escalate EOC failures, or, um, push for new ICN reorganization. Business employer non-compliance can be addressed by city without EOC. Require submission of business protocols for review. Recruit qualified people and swear in as volunteer disaster workers to assist in review of business licensee paperwork for accept or reject. Target high-group businesses first, suspend licenses for not providing protocols. We can't afford to fail. Continued illness and fear holds back the economy from recovering. Masks go together with reopening. Um, in parentheses, New York Governor Como. Adopt no-mask-no-service mindset. Um, parentheses, LA Mayor, um, Garcetti. Enforce businesses non-compliant using the leverage of business licensing and other means. Given the city's past experience with Mr. Louie, adopt a resolution that the city will not tolerate false claims of medical exemptions. And then we have, um, three comments that have come in on the computer. Um, the first one is from Thomas Burns of, um, Uba City. Actually, he's put in two different ones, so they're both, the ones I'll read are from Thomas Burns. There is a lot of people like me who believe that this pandemic has been hyped up to the max. As passionate as some are about the so-called pandemic, there are people like me that are just as passionate that is, it is extremely blown out of proportion. There has been a huge amount of lies by the mainstream media. All credibility has been lost. And then the next one has come in from Tony, um, Curran. Um, any thought to businesses that are not in the restaurant sector? Would this assist all businesses or just the restaurant industry?
That was reference our conversation surrounding Pluma Street?
Um, I believe so, but he is talking about other businesses that you're reaching out wanting to help them and he wants to know, um, if you would be assisting all businesses or just the restaurant industry.
Okay. Any others?
Um, not on this item.
Okay.
Through the mayor, I just want to add, um, I would like to say to Karen Hess, um, thank you for your presentation. I heard your comments and I appreciate that. Also, Thomas Burns, I appreciate your comments and thank you for giving us some insights on your views. And Tony, I would like to say to you that, um, I represent, um, uh, the Council on the Economic Development Corporation and, um, one of the things as representative on that, committee and board, um, we are looking at, uh, other businesses in addition to restaurants. So I would just like to, um, share that as well. Thank you.
All right. So that would conclude item number two, response to COVID. And I appreciate definitely all the input from, um, the community, staff and the council. And as we move forward, you know, I would hope that we continue to manage our expectations from staff regarding the impact, maybe, I mean, we have our list of priorities and we have things that we want to do. We've, we're clearly all agreed upon what they are, but as we, as ideas come up, and they probably will, in anticipation of that, that we manage the expectation of staff. I mean, we've, we've, they've take a hit on their budgets. I know, I know development services is definitely stretched really thin and we're even trying to hopefully get them some more help. But everything we do that might not necessarily be on the front burner of a priority has an impact on them, that would take them away from those front burner ideas. And I just, as we move forward, we all, we all have ideas and, uh, consider that we, before we make, make our phone calls, if at all, if it does happen, to task them with doing something, we consider the impact we have on that. I'm not saying we're not, I'm just saying that when, when the ideas come up that we, just a reminder that we keep that in mind because it, they are pretty stressed and, and wound pretty thin. that in mind because they are pretty stressed and, and wound pretty thin. And thank you again for everything. And everybody does. It's, you're working really hard and we really appreciate it.